Hey, good evening, everyone. I will call our work session to order of April 27, 2021, being held virtually via WebEx. And we do have a work session and the topic is discuss preliminary work in public outreach activities related to the Veterans Park area moratorium. I will pass it to City Manager Rodriguez, and then if you could just make the clarification, I don't see it here on the summary of the work session, but it is a joint session. And I think we have three commissions, three groups here, but just to clarify, I'm looking and it looks like it's the Community Services Planning Commission in the City Council. But City Manager, if you can please clarify that and I'll pass it over to you. Thank you.
Yes, I'll actually ask Assistant Director Paleman to further introduce the topic tonight because she has been leading the work with our consultant. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And to clarify, this is a joint meeting of the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Chair of the Community Services Commission. In order to make sure our numbers were reasonable, we've invited Lisa Rudolph, the Chair, but not the entire commission. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the moratorium that the City Council adopted on December 8 of last year. You'll remember that this is a seven-month moratorium. It is on parcels in the vicinity of Bets Park that are guided in the 2040 comp plan for medium-density residential, high-density residential, and commercial. And the intent here is to develop standards that we can adopt in the zoning code to actually implement the comprehensive plan, making sure that the regulations reflect exactly what we want to see happen around this regional destination in our city and also in support of the recent transportation investments that the city and county and metro transit are making on 66th Street and as well as with the D-line on Portland Avenue that's coming yet this year. One reminder, we are on a tight timeline with this moratorium. We have seven months. The moratorium will expire June 24 of this year. And before that, we do need to have three public meetings. There needs to be a public hearing at the Planning Commission, a first reading at the City Council, and then a second reading back at the City Council again. So tonight, Haysington Cogler representatives from Haysington Cogler Group, Lance Bernard and Jeff Miller are going to take you through the public engagement that we've done so far, where we're at in terms of developing this overlay district and our standards. And from you, we will be looking for feedback on is the work we're doing accurately reflecting what we're hearing, what you're hearing, are we on the right track to keep moving forward? So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Lance Bernard with HKGI and let him take over with their presentation. Are you there, Lance? We can't hear you.
Looks like he's on mute. Let's see.
We can see your screen, Lance, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
There we go. Was that him?
Can you hear me now? Well, I tested this right when I joined and then, of course, it's got to give me glitches right when I start. So I apologize for that. I'm going to share my screen. And we'll get started. So apologize for that quick issue. And you guys can see the presentation in front of you.
Yes.
So, my, welcome. Thank you. My name's Lance Bernard, planner with HKGI. And with me today is Jeff Miller, also a planner with HKGI. And Jeff and I have both been leading this effort over the last four months. Months and want to present to you guys today a little bit of where we are in the study process, get your feedback on the direction we're going with some of our preliminary or our findings and some of our preliminary recommendations. So to give the group a little bit of context of the area that we have been evaluating is the parcels along 66th Street and Portland Avenue that have been guided by the Conference of Plan for a higher intensity use, looking at the parcels guided for medium-density or high-density residential and commercial. So we really have been honing in on those parcels that are in the different color variations there on your screen. That's been really our target of focus over this as part of this study. And Melissa kind of already recapped a little bit of our study objectives. But we really are trying to establish some design standards and/or guidelines that help really facilitate redevelopment of these parcels if and when that happens to make sure that they can work in unison in proximity to Veterans Memorial Park and certainly the adjacent neighborhoods. As part of that effort, we're also looking at the right implementation tools. We want to find the right zoning districts that align with the comprehensive plan land use designations and also exploring ways to implement some of those design standards that we've been looking at likely through a zoning overlay district. One of our main objectives through this effort is really to avoid any conference of plan amendments. We look back at some of the previous conference of plans. And when you go back as far as the 1998 Conference of Plan, many of these land uses that have been guided for this corridor still held that designation back in the 98 comp plan, the 2008 comp plan, and today's comprehensive plan as well. So we want to make sure that we're adhering to those land use categories that have been really established through other planning processes and envisioning sessions for quite some time now. As Melissa mentioned, we're on a tight time schedule. We're looking to really wrap up this study with a couple of different engagement opportunities here in the next month and also the public hearing and then to City Council for consideration in late June before that moratorium expires. So we kicked off this study early on in January. Over the course of those early months, we had an online engagement survey. We reached out to property owners and we really worked through a number of kind of the evaluation tasks that we were charged with. And now we're here late April, trying to get some feedback from you today as well before we wrap this up in May to get to some of those later steps of public hearings and adoption. So part of our early public engagement, we did a more of an online survey, a questionnaire, to get people's thoughts and ideas about how and what redevelopment could look like in this area based on their land use designation, looking to understand how people even interact with the park and what some of their concerns would be with development on the fringe of Veterans Memorial Park. And we had fairly good response from the survey. Seventy-five folks participated. We did receive a number of written and emailed comments from the public as well. And I would say, you know, the three takeaways, general takeaways or key themes are listed on your screen there that for the most part, people are fairly supportive of the mix of different land uses in the area, recognize that those areas have been guided for higher intensity uses as part of the conference of plan. But certainly a lot of discussion and comments around improved ped bike connections in the area. How can we provide better connectivity to the park, particularly looking at the pool area, the ice arena, and knowing that the American Legion site is guided for high-density residential? How can pedestrian connections work between all of those uses and up to the memorial north of that site? But in addition to that, people certainly have concerns and issues or thoughts around building heights, traffic volume, and associated with new development. We have met with representatives from the American Legion on a couple of occasions and some of those folks are here tonight listening in as well. So appreciate their participation and engagement through this effort to get their thoughts on where we are in this study process and some of those draft recommendations. We also felt it was a good opportunity to engage Hennepin County early on in these discussions, knowing that they would have comments or would want to be involved as part of a development proposal. So we wanted to get ahead of the curve and really understand what some of their access management guidelines are, what some of their traffic concerns may be with new development. And so had a fairly good conversation with them to document some of their things that we should be looking at or even property owners and developers should be aware of when looking at their options in the area. So we definitely collected a lot of input so far, listening from our property owners, stakeholders, and through that community survey. Most of our comments are really kind of generated in an area of focus around the pool area. And so I won't go through all of these bullets, but there is a smattering of just some of those bigger themes that have come out of that engagement. I mentioned before, a fair amount of connectivity questions and comments, how people can interact with this northeast quadrant from the pool ice arena into the park, recognizing that there are other larger investments being planned along Portland Avenue with new transit service through BRT. Also, just looking at some of the relationships between development and the pool ice arena. So a fair amount of things to just kind of absorb and information that we use to really lead us to one of our next steps in developing some draft design principles. And these design principles are meant to really articulate the goals and vision for the area. Using a lot of that community input helps shape these nine principles. They cover a number of different planning elements between people's personal connections to Veterans Memorial Park, connectivity, working on trying to diversify housing options in the area, looking at ways to be sustainable with development. And then, you know, a number of different design elements related to building transition height, massing, and parking. So these encompass what we've heard, what we think is appropriate for this area that can serve as some a guiding tool for development in the area. So our next kind of bigger task as part of this effort was really trying to understand the appropriate zoning districts for the study area. And so the map in front of you shows the comprehensive plan land use designation. And as I mentioned before, we have a mix of medium to high-density residential and commercial uses along this corridor. So our goal really is to make sure that we have the right underlying zoning district to align with the conference of plan. A number of you have been part of that recent conference plan update, which is updated every 10 years. It really established those goals and strategies for future development and land uses within the city. And then from there, what I was going to show here is that you can see a number of the parcels today are currently zoned for single-family that don't really align with that land use plan category. When you think about the properties guided for medium to high-density residential along 66th Street in Portland Avenue, there are portions of several parcels just south of 66th Street, east of Portland that the HRA owns, that is also guided for multifamily housing, but is currently zoned for single-family. So we wanted to look at the right zoning districts to recommend for these parcels to make sure they're better aligned with the comprehensive plan. So through that evaluation, we saw that there is a fair amount of consistency with the zoning districts with property that's guided for community commercial. So we don't see any necessarily changes or recommendations that need to happen to align those properties with the right zoning districts. There are certainly a few parcels that are guided for medium-density residential that are zoned for single-family that would eventually need to be re-guided for medium residential MR2. And there are several precedents on the corridor that align with that today. And that would be the preferred zoning district for those parcels throughout the corridor. One of the areas of focus has really been more on the American Legion site that is guided for high-density residential and zone for single-family residential. So we needed to spend some time to understand what the appropriate zoning district for that is. And our draft recommendation at this point is to rezone that or recommend rezoning of that property to multi-residential district MR3, which is still fosters higher-density development and has really seems to be the is the most appropriate district for this land use category. So as we looked at some of those draft recommendations and understanding where some of those zoning changes could occur, we wanted to also kind of test those sites' capacity to really help articulate the design principles and the potential density ranges and building heights for those properties and also look at parking requirements and how they would be accessed from the local road or county road. So these site capacity concepts that I'll bring up here in a minute are really meant to just test ideas. They're not meant to design a development, but just to help articulate design principles and understand if there's any constraints, development constraints to those sites. So one of the first kind of capacity analysis's we looked at was the property I just spoke about that the HRA owns, south of 66th Street, east of Portland. Currently, the HRA owns about three, three or four parcels right at that corner. And then the parcels to the south are still guided for medium-density residential, but owned by individual property owners. So in this case, we wanted to just test to see how medium-density residential development would work in this area, looking at access points and how we can create buffers between that type of a townhome type development with single-family residential development. In this case, we were looking at more of a three-story maximum height, which is consistent with the MDR zoning district and looking at townhomes anywhere from about 1,800 to 2,200 square foot. So again, this was just a matter of testing some ideas to see what can fit on these sites and to look at access points. The thought is with our conversation with Hennepin County, that access to the HRA property would have to happen on Portland Avenue, more than likely a ride-in, ride-out. But as development happened further to the south over time, that access point could disappear and they would really encourage more of a full access on 66th Street to avoid any kind of traffic conflicts on Portland Avenue or traffic operation concerns with access being that close to BRT station and the roundabout. So a couple of different site capacity studies we did here to just test those ideas. In addition to that, we wanted to look at the parcels along 66th Street further to the east that are also guided for medium-density residential. And just to really more articulate some of the design principles of really encouraging development to happen, fronting 66th Street and again, providing more access and parking to the rear and how that access would flow in internal traffic circulation to those sites. So fairly high-level concepts here for those two scenarios. Where we've spent most of our time and most of our energy is really looking at the American Legion site. This is where, again, this property is guided for high-density residential and based on our conversations with some of the representatives for with the American Legion as they certainly do have aspirations to develop and currently exploring all of their development options at the moment. And for us, we wanted to just test a couple of different ideas of how that site could develop into high-density residential, looking at two different buildings and still retaining some space for the Legion. Whether that's about a 10,000-square-foot restaurant meeting space is really still to be determined, but that was one of the assumptions we were using to inform this concept. So the one in front of you right now really looked at more of a way to increase public, semi-public space and connectivity, having a common plaza in between the two buildings and really leading connection to the rich, to the Veterans Memorial site to the north. But then also recognizing that there's going to be parking needs for the Legion and some potential surface parking for that memorial as well. So looking at ways to program surface parking, but then also assuming that a good bulk of that parking that would serve the residential buildings would be tucked under the building or underground. And so in this case, you know, we're, it's kind of a math game of trying to figure out how to park that and the size of the units. This assumes a five-story building, which is consistent with the HDR zoning district, five stories that's consistent with the height limitations in the HDR zoning district. And so each floor plate could certainly vary between size of units, anywhere from 800 to 1,000 square feet. But this again was a way to test what you could get on that site. And more importantly, can you meet that land use designation density ranges in the comprehensive plan from 35 to 100 units per acre? So our next site capacity study looked at something very similar to the first, but the difference here is just repositioning the buildings a bit and scaling them a little differently to have some more internal traffic circulation. So this scenario continues to emphasize pedestrian bike connectivity to the park, to the memorial and throughout the site, but also has an internal roadway in between the two buildings and some additional surface parking for the Legion and the residential uses in this, in this case. This scenario really then also looked at pushing that roadway connection to align a little bit more with the property to the south. Whereas if there were some long-term redevelopment of the funeral home to the south, we would, you know, this would test that kind of internal traffic circulation to keep access, to keep traffic between the two sites to 66th Street. Again, these concepts or this scenario here looks at ways to increase connectivity, ped bike connections, semi-public, open space courtyards within those residential developments and still again retaining space for the American Legion that would be integrated in with one of those residential buildings. So these are just some ideas to help understand density ranges, articulate those design guidelines and test some different concepts. One area that we needed to be cognizant of through this effort is building height. Certainly through our early public engagement, there are questions and concerns about building height. And currently today, the HDR zoning district MR3 allows buildings to five stories, 50 feet. And so this cross-section just shows how five stories works with those site capacity studies we did, but there is a significant grade change in the site. So when you measure the grade, the topography from Portland Avenue down to the ice arena, you have about a 20-foot grade change. And the way the zoning code reads is that your building height is measured from the elevation of the street. So in theory, you could get another level of, a level on this development scenario that could be used for underground parking, tuck-under parking, or more space for the Legion or residential uses. So this cross-section, the first building to your left is six stories. But we also wanted to really understand when we think about height and understanding how building height and what the implementations are from a shading standpoint. We did a shading study to really look at what those implications are to the swimming pool and some of the adjacent uses in the park. And so what this diagram depicts is a, you know, a typical beautiful sunny summer afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock of where that sun angle would hit a five-story building and where that shade would potentially encroach into the park or swimming pool. And this is again really all driven by the site, where you cite that building and where that building's positioned, but this was at least a planning level exercise to start to understand where that shading could occur with a five-story building. If you were to go any higher than five stories, you really do start to see some implications with shading into the swimming pool and certainly above and beyond eight stories. For example, 12 stories, you know, you definitely see a significant increase. So some of the design standards we're looking at are really ways to help minimize some of those implications to shading with building height in this area or to be cognizant of that and to require developer to think about that and demonstrate their own shade study with any type of development that they would be proposing in the area. So that leads us to a lot of things that we've thought about and things that we're considering and exploring for our draft zoning recommendations. One of the key ones that we had mentioned is rezoning the American Legion site from single-family residential to multifamily residential. That again feels to be the most appropriate zoning district for this area. But that zoning district really only allows residential development today. And we want to establish some flexibility to allow some commercial space, meeting space in that type of, in a residential type development. And so one way of doing that is looking at a Veterans Memorial overlay district that would integrate some of those standards and that flexibility that would allow some commercial to happen with residential development, as long as it's not the predominant use. So looking at an appropriate split of 75% residential to 25% commercial or retail, we feel is an appropriate recommendation for the site. We'd also want to open up that flexibility as well for some of the property guided for community commercial and zone for commercial in the area that if a new development wanted to have that first level of commercial and more of a workforce, work-live environment, they could have some residential uses on their two or three-story development as well. Moving forward, we would still encourage a building height to stay at two to five stories, which is again consistent with the MR3 district. And then also looking at some other standards that really understand how development works in the area, in the study area with Veterans Memorial Park. So looking at ways to preserve trees, enhancing ped bike connections in the area. And then also the final bullet here is to look at revising the maximum lot coverage for high-density residential development. Currently today, it's 30%. We've discussed this with staff and through a couple of different workshops and feel like it could be a higher, that is more realistic for this type of development and in line with other zoning districts for maximum lot coverages in the city. So where do we go from here? Again, we want your feedback tonight on where we've been going and what we've been exploring and our findings. We want to engage the community here in the next couple of weeks with another community survey to get their thoughts on those design principles to make sure that they really reflect what we heard from them and test some of those zoning recommendations as well around building height and surface coverage. And then, you know, really get this report wrapped up for staff's review and then in front of the appropriate commissions and councils here in late May and early June for adoption. So I will end there and really open it up for discussion and feedback.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I will open it up and see if I'm trying to scroll through here, but so please jump in if you can, or you can put it in the chat and then I'll call on you. But if you could raise your hand and let me know if you're interested in asking any questions or sharing comments. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm generally supportive of most of what we've talked through. I think the main thing I want to talk about is building height. But first I had a question. Is there a, is there a significant difference between zoning something multifamily residential with up to 25% commercial versus zoning something as mixed use? It just seems like the ME or the enclave projects we've looked at that are, I'm guessing, would be roughly within that 25% margin, but those in my memory had all been mixed use. So I was just curious about the difference.
Councilmember Wayland, that's a good question. And we did look at the mixed use versus the MR3. The MR3 is really intended, now some of the regulations in MR3 are antiquated and we're going to be looking at them anyway, but in general, MR3 is expected to be a little bit more suburban versus the very urban form of the mixed-use districts, where you're pulling the buildings right up to the street, where you're really maximizing your density and your intensity on a site. MR3 is expected to have a little bit more green space, expected to blend a little more seamlessly transition into single-family or in this case into a park setting. So that's why we've looked at MR3.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense to me. My, my other comment is about building height. I am, I am open to others' thoughts. I am concerned about a five-story building. I think the largest thing anywhere or the tallest thing anywhere in this district right now is about two and a half stories because all of the NOAA housing tends to have half a story underground, even if it is three stories of units. And then just knowing, I was driving around today, I know like the Chamberlain and now the Town Homes by Target are three. And then just knowing, I was driving around today, I know like the Chamberlain and now the Town Homes by Target are three stories, but just because of design and elevate like the hills and things, they look taller than that. Um, and knowing that there was a, a grade change like this on the, um, Novo site, that one end of it looks even taller than the five stories it is. Um, I just worry about, um, what this would look like with, if it is five stories and especially if that is five stories tall at Portland and closer to six or even six and a half, um, at the, the low end of the grade. So I, I'm not set on that, but I just want to share that concern and that I think given what, what I've been hearing most is concern about how does it fit in with the park and the sightline? And I think there's ways to do this with a higher density residential feel without with it being like three or four stories.
Yeah, I, Councilmember Wayland, I know that's been, you know, certainly comments we've heard from the general public as well. And, you know, for our effort, we have been really looking at ways to be consistent with, you know, the, the comprehensive plan, land use designation for high density that, you know, falls back on that MR three zoning district that allows for, for five stories. And so we've talked a fair amount of too of how some of those top-level, um, stories could be stepped back a little bit. Ways to design it in a way that doesn't give it that larger kind of scale feeling to it. But, um, I guess I, I'm, you know, we wanna hear from others about what their, their thoughts are on, on building height because it is something we've, we've spent a fair amount of talk, time talking about as well. You know, I, I would say too, real quick, I, you know, I think there's certainly people that would be looking for, you know, uh, uh, higher, uh, stories as well and, and to push that even higher. But we felt that, you know, again, this is most appropriate for, for, uh, the zoning district we're recommending, which, you know, allows that, that fifty, fifty feet, five stories.
So I'll jump in here and say, um, I know we have a question. I'll go next to Councilmember Wayland. Then Commissioner Rudolph also wanted to, um, speak after Commissioner Hayford or after Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Um, and then before I go to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, um, I know Peter Coyle would like to speak on behalf of the Legion. So just quick, um, Attorney Coyle, do you wanna speak after everybody has kind of had their discussion or you just wanna, um, speak after Commissioner Rudolph, just to clarify?
I would just want to be respectful of your council and your planning commission members and staff, uh, Mayor. I'm happy to talk after they've had a chance to offer their comments, whatever you prefer.
Okay, great. Well then, why don't you go after Commissioner Rudolph? We have plenty of time. And it would be great to hear your comments. So what, um, and then also Councilmember Wayland kind of brought that to the group and to discuss a little bit more. If people could please share their thoughts on the building height, that would be greatly appreciated. So Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had a couple, a couple of notes. So first is to answer about the building heights. In, in general, I'm pretty happy with what the recommendations have for the Legion site particularly. Um, I, I do see what Councilmember Wayland is saying about the right on the park side. And I do wonder if there's a way to, you know, um, Lance talked about how in, in general, it's measured from the street since we are doing an overlay district. Is there a way to max out that height on the park side? Cause, cause Councilmember Wayland is right, like, uh, Novo from the sixty-sixth corner is like over seven stories, even though it's, we call it a five-story building. But in, in general, I don't have a problem with five stories. And I will say I particularly like the approach of the shade study at the pool as sort of the basis for the height that we're recommending. That I want something that fits into the park, but I also want something that gets built and that's, that's viable to build. So I'd worry about restricting that too much. Um, a couple of other things, uh, wanted to say about this, you know, the presentation started off talking about the changes. We have the D-line coming in. We have multimodal improvements on sixty-six that weren't, uh, known or at least early in the, in the comprehensive plan process. But I'm not quite seeing how we've changed anything as a result of that. Um, and I would say I particularly have concerns. I, I'm again, very happy with what was recommended for the Legion site. The rest of the corridor along sixty-six, I don't feel like that's enough. I would love to see us upzone that area. South of the roundabout, uh, this is a D-line station area and the fact that we, we could do as low as twelve units per acre would, would kind of be a shame because that would really not be getting enough people close to that, that transit stop. And in general, along sixty-six, I understand the need to avoid the comp plan amendments for timing with the Legion site, but for the rest of the corridor, I, I don't see any particular reason why like the block that happens to have commercial is designated commercial and the others are medium density. I would, I would prefer mixed use zoning along this whole thing to provide flexibility there. And then the last thing, assuming we are going forward with MR three for the Legion site, there's just some other things that I hope could be revised. In particular, we, we require a really huge setback for MR three. And I would like to see that relaxed. If you walk by now, you're on this like teeny tiny six-foot sidewalk, you've got cars, you know, almost touching you. And then you've got this big useless dead green space and I don't really wanna recreate that. I think green space is great when it's valuable and people use it, but when it's just kinda empty green, you know, green pavement basically between yourself and the building. I don't think that really adds value. So I would love to see that distance that required a setback reduced. But overall thumbs up, basically thumbs up on the site and I'd like to see us go further along sixty-six.
Any comments on, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's, um, feedback before I move to Council, um, Commissioner Rudolph? All right, go ahead, Commissioner Rudolph.
So a, as a veteran myself, I'm not sure you're gonna get buy-off from the veterans groups with building something like this without being inclusive of them. I'm also very concerned about the, uh, less than one ratio of parking because we all know it's going to easily overflow into the hockey arena as well as the ice arena, you know, or the, uh, swimming pool during the summer. We find issues with that right now with, uh, a fair amount of the new developments right now. And there's really nowhere for them to go. Um, how are we gonna address those things? And do we have buy-off? How are we gonna get buy-off from, uh, veterans groups on this one? Um, I think just throwing a five, six-story building, a, you know, apartment building in the middle of Veterans Park is I'll just leave it at that.
I, I can address that a little bit. In terms of parking ratios, you know, these were just capacity studies and they were done using our current working requirements. So we were just testing how many units could potentially fit on a site, what size buildings might look like. Looking at how to protect, um, and provide a large buffer adjacent to the park on the east side, protecting the trees and the memorial to the north side. So this is really just trying to figure out what would fit and what kind of connectivity we could add and the, the kinds of regulations that we could put in place. So there's nothing in here that says that we're requiring a certain parking ratio. Or that we're lowering parking standards. We're, we're not doing any of those things. We're not actually considering any parking changes to our regulations as a, as a part of this. We're just using what's in place now. In terms of buy-in from the Legion, you know, through this whole process, and I'm, I'm sure that Mr. Coyle is going to, uh, touch on this. But we have been, um, in contact with the Legion and their representatives several times. We've been sharing this information. He will be able to speak best to this, but I, I do believe that, um, we are moving on a track that the, the Legion is moving on a similar track. I don't think we're that far apart. Um, they knew what the guiding district was for this parcel. Um, we're not proposing that that changes. We're actually adding flexibility for them. So our hope is that, this is going to work both for the city and for what the Legion sees for their future. And part of that is adding the commercial component to the MR three district. If you have, if you have follow-ups, if I, if I missed something, let me know.
The other, the other follow-up is I remember when, um, they were building the, um, new, new, uh, stadium for, uh, at, at Veterans Park. When music ship, music, um, they ran into some soil issues with, uh, the ground being too soft. We're gonna, you know, make sure there's a soil study done on this to make sure it's capable to han, handle a building of that size.
Commissioner Rudolph, that's a good question. And I assume that the Legion, because this is their own property, would be doing those soil studies or that any developer that they would work with would be taking soil samples to, um, ensure that whatever they were proposing, uh, would work on this particular site. That would be up to the Legion though. It wouldn't be something that the city did ahead of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudolph. Um, I will pass it to Attorney Coyle. And then I also know, um, after Attorney Coyle, that Mark Barthel would like to speak as well. So after he's finished, you can go ahead, Mark.
Uh, thanks very much, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you and your council members and your planning commission attendees and staff as well. I, I wanna just first compliment the staff on, uh, sharing information with us about their uh, design ideas based on the recommendations that your consultant has provided. We have had, uh, several rounds of back and forth with them. And, and I think that the plans that were presented this evening represent a, a, a positive, good faith effort to try to offer some flexible ideas for how the Legion property itself could re, be redeveloped in the future. Our, my comments and their comments at this point suffer from a couple of limitations. The most practical one, as we forecasted when the moratorium was put in place, was our inability to have a developer's perspective brought into this discussion. And that's, I'm not finger pointing at this point. We're well into the moratorium and the process is moving along as best it can. But we don't have the direct input of a developer who would be hoping to purchase and redevelop the site. But having said that, the notion that there would be an allowance for a four- to five-story building uh, on the property, perhaps in two buildings, certainly seems reasonable, certainly seems appropriate to us. And so we certainly endorse that on the part of the, uh, design proposal. What I would say though, uh, from the, from the Legion's membership perspective, and this is the second limitation. You, you understand, I'm sure, that this is a membership-driven organization and there are some nine hundred members, all of whom have a voice. None of them are developers by professional background. And so having them understand that the process that we are going through with you, the collaborative process that we are going through with you, uh, and the need for input and consensus frankly, in order to have a clear way forward has taken more time than we envisioned. We continue to work at it pretty diligently. There have been several week, uh, meetings over the weekend on the last month that have occurred. There's one component that begins to emerge that I wanna just share with you. And, and it plays off of the, the recommendation to include some component of commercial within the high-density zoning designation as it was outlined. And that's the thought on the Legion's part that a freestanding building of some sort may be in their best interests, which, which could, uh, require that there be a fourth option, uh, envisioned. We don't have a plan to show you this evening. We're, we're diligently trying to get an architect to help us put such a plan together that would hopefully mesh with the proposal that's been created by your consultant. But the thought would be that the Legion would be in best control of its future if it can be in a building of its own. And, and just very broadly, they're thinking in terms of a ten thousand square foot facility. Something that would have flexible meeting space available for rent by the public. A banquet space of a limited scale, bar and restroom, bar and, um, restaurant facilities. All of the concepts that we've shared with you previously. The difference being that the goal would be to have this be in a, in a space that would be the Legion's own, that it manages on its own, and that would be, uh, under the control of the members itself. As opposed to something that would have been integrated more closely with one of the other multifamily buildings. The notion of having multifamily on the property is certainly endorsed. It's our hope that there will be a, an accommodation for veterans in terms of what kind of housing is there and how it's priced, but that's a developer buyer decision. But I wanted to just share those broad concepts with you, Mayor, and, and, uh, other attendees. Perhaps, uh, the other representative of Legion will be able to offer some additional comments. But we appreciate the ability to speak to you this evening and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you so much, Attorney Coyle. I'll pass it on to Mark.
Great to be, be with you tonight. Everyone hearing okay? Okay. Uh, first of all, I wanna, I just wanna make a statement and then I've got a question about the concepts that were shown earlier. Just wanna reiterate that something that, uh, Peter Coyle, uh, touched on, the Post 435 continues to offer our full cooperation with the city in the small area study while Post leadership continues to review all options available to determine the best direction that will meet our membership directed objectives. And, um, and now my question is, as I was watching the, uh, slides go up, where the placement of, uh, in those concepts, the building was, uh, that we would be utilizing to say if it's a ten thousand square foot building, if it's not able to be worked into there, while that's our preference, if it's part of a building, would it be possible, are we looking at one floor or two floors for the building, uh, for the American Legion to be housed in? And utilize, say, two five thousand foot section stacked? Or, or, or how, how is that? How is our space being defined in those concepts?
One floor. I can answer that real quickly. You know, those, those, um, site capacity studies, uh, that they all had two buildings. And one of those buildings always included a ten thousand square foot space for the American Legion. Whether you slice that and dice it on one floor or two floors, that, that's really, you know, a, a developer and your decision how you wanna do it. But at a minimum, we're trying to test that ten thousand to fourteen thousand square foot space in those.
Okay, cause I, I do believe ten thousand will be the, would, I think, in our discussions we've had, you know, we, we, we wanna downsize from what our current position is or size and, I'm not locking it in right now, but I don't see us with a, uh, facility larger than ten right now. So, and, um, I take it there would be floors above wherever the Legion site is in those concepts?
I'm sorry, was that, you were asking whether it would?
That would be, that would mean then also there would be, um, units on the upper floors directly above the Legion site, on whichever one of those three concepts are, are, if one of those three come to visual, you know, come to reality.
Yeah, that, that's quite possible. And, and I just wanna preface that these aren't really meant to be design concepts. They're just more to test the capacity that we're able to have buildings that accommodate a number of different unit types and ten thousand plus square feet for the American Legion. So we never really got into the full design of how that gets laid out. It's more of the square footage and the footprint of that building onsite.
Okay. All right. Well, that was all I had then. Um, wanted to make that initial, uh, read that initial statement and then ask you the, about. So that would be between the developers and, and us then where we would fit in there is what you're saying, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Excuse me, if I, this is Jeff Miller with HKGI. If I could just add to that. The concepts were meant to also show the relationship of where the Legion might be in its parking area. So assuming that surface parking would probably be the main parking for the Legion versus enclosed parking for the residential. So when you look at those concepts, it's really trying to figure out where that parking would best be placed on that site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then I will pass it to Councilmember Supple who had let me know she wanted to speak as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Rick Gonzalez. Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you to everybody that worked on this. It was really helpful to see how you were gonna have everything connected because I think that connectivity for the bikes and the pedestrians is important and the child, the traffic flows and ideas of how the parking would work. Um, as far as building height, I would not support anything above five stories. And I think we need to look at whether or not five is too many. But it should certainly not be above five stories. Um, and especially when I was looking at the shadow studies for the pool and those types of things. So I'm glad that all of that's being considered. A question that I wanted to make sure I'm understanding correctly is, you know, we're talking about zoning changes and guiding things for, for future development. But say along sixty-sixth street, if we have But say along 66th Street, if we have homeowners that are already there, I'm assuming they're going to be grandparented in. And that even if we change the zoning and do some things, those people would still be able to continue until some future point if somebody, if they choose to sell. But we're not going to like, I guess I want to make sure that, that people who are there are not being pushed out or in that anyway. So if you could clarify that, thank you.
Councilmember Supple, yes, I can take that. This is just looking at, we're not looking at changing the comprehensive plan designations in these areas. Those are already set. And yes, anyone who has an existing property there who has no desire to ever leave or to sell to a private developer can stay there in perpetuity. They can continue to maintain their house and live in the house just as they, just as they have been now. There are some properties along that 66th Street strip that are for sale. So we do want to make sure that we have the regulations in place in case some of those properties turn over. But no, it would be no change for anyone who is not interested in leaving.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add-
That was helpful.
If I could just add to that briefly. So we are required to have our zoning ordinance conform to our comprehensive plan. And right now on the Legion site, I don't believe that's the case, correct Melissa? Right, yeah, that's not the case. And so that site, we have to do something different with the zoning. We don't, that's not a choice. It's something we must do. And I know a couple of folks have brought up the idea of comprehensive plan changes. And we've been, and one of the marching orders that Hoyt and Cogler Group was working with, under, is that we did not want to change the comprehensive plan without, without a really good reason to do so. And the reason for that is, I know it's been a few years now, but that comprehensive planning effort was very robust. The, the outreach to the citizens was monumental. And it's something that A, I don't think we could do during the pandemic. And B, I don't think we can do under the scope of this particular study, you know, in terms of the, the money and resources we're putting into the study. So that's why we were hesitant to want to step in and talk about changing something that had so much community buy-in to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stark. I will pass it to Director Markle, who let me know she wanted to speak. And then after that, Councilmember Troutman can go.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Amy Markle, Recreation Services Director. And I just really appreciate being a part of this process, being that development is so close to the park. And, you know, a couple of positive things that that are coming out of it is that improved connectivity between pedestrians and bikers off of Portland over to the park, the arena and the pool. So I see a lot of improvements there through the redevelopment, which is something that a lot of residents noted in the engagement as, as liking to see. I do like having as much green space buffer as possible around the development. And I think as Councilmember O'Leary noted, having more meaningful green buffer would be great if it could be like pollinator gardens or things that, you know, really absorbed runoff. With the 20-foot grade currently, all the water off the impervious parking lot runs into one drain in the northwest corner of the ice arena. And it really fills up Legion Lake very quickly. And so I think having that stormwater plan on the east side of the development is really key to catch a lot of that runoff. So that's a great improvement. Um, I guess I have a few questions about the shade study. I guess I'd want to know what August looks like because the pool is open June through August. I can just see June and July. And I too, you know, would be in favor of five stories or less. I think I'd be more comfortable with a building or buildings that are less imposing on the park. I, like Councilmember Whaling, kind of drove around and looked at different stories of building and just wondering what five stories would look like. You know, if you were in the pool swimming, what would that be like to have a five-story building kind of behind you shadowing over the pool? So just stuff to keep in mind, the aesthetic and how it imposes on the park and the people using the park. So I see a lot of benefits to the outcomes of the study. But I still have a few more questions, I guess mainly about the shading later in the summer and then also just overall height of the buildings would be a concern for me.
Thank you, Director Markle. I don't know if anyone is able to respond to the comments or questions she just asked.
I can go. In terms of a shade study in August, yes, I, I do think that that's probably something that could be run. I think that what's come out of the work thus far is that we are going to require a study by any new development there. We're going to want any development, you know, this, this is kind of an example to help us get in the, the right neighborhood for the regulations that we want in place. But we will require one of the specific development. I do think that it's possible for HK to potentially adjust that for August, though, to see what five stories looks like in August.
Just to add to that, I'm, I think that the Hoyt and Cogler Shadow Study was for the summer solstice, which would be the, the maximum shading that you would see. You know, so the direction of the shading could change from that. But the extent would not be any greater than what's shown in those studies.
That, that's a great point, John. And that is typically when we ask developers to provide the shade study for is the winter solstice and the summer solstice. So that's why they were done then. In terms of five stories, we have talked about, it, it is a little bit more work and maybe Lance or Jeff could jump in. We have talked about the possibility of trying to do some type of model to show what it might look like from the parking lot of the arena toward a five-story building, or in this case, if it, if it's stepping down and it's actually six there. From, from our perspective, I, I think with the buildings there, it's not going to look as imposing as perhaps, as perhaps the Novo does from the corner at that intersection of 66th and Penn. But we have talked about doing that just to help people picture and decide if what is really the appropriate height there. Lance, do you have anything to add to, or Jeff?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's something we've discussed internally with staff about that kind of model. We have not done that type of 3D model yet. And it's something we can explore a little bit more with city staff and what the level of effort would be for that because there's certainly a number of ways to approach it and a number of different ways to, you know, set up those models to give different visual representations. So we don't have anything at this moment.
Yeah, just, just, this is Jeff, just to add to that. We want another intent of the concepts was to have extra space around the perimeter of the lot. So Amy Markle brought up the stormwater area. The intent there was that works for stormwater, but it also creates a view, a vision or a sightline from the south to the north for the park areas. And likewise, on the north side, if there was a surface parking area or open space next to the park, that would also help with sightlines. And I think everybody knows another factor in the concepts is there is that line of trees on the north side of the property that are very tall. So that's also going to come into play with the building heights as far as what you see from the park.
Thank you. And then in terms of speaking next, it'll be Councilmember Troutman, then Commissioner Quam, then Commissioner Levin. I know we were slated to end at 6:45, which is right now, but I will probably just have us go. Hopefully we have a minute or two, a couple of minutes before the council meeting, but this is a good discussion that we're having and it's extremely important. So go ahead, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll keep my comments brief, but I'm really appreciative to staff and our consultants and, and the Legion for, for, for being in dialogue with us through this process and for putting this, this great, this great presentation together. Really, really briefly, I think I echo the thoughts of Councilmember Supple and April O'Leary. I appreciated the shading study. I think I'm still concerned just even if the shade doesn't technically fall on the, on the swimming pool, just what it will feel like as a, as a presence to have a building that's quite that tall next to the pool. I don't have a firm thought on that, but I'm a little concerned. I do appreciate that, that it won't shade the, the, the city, the city asset like that. Also appreciated the modeling that showed some, some capacity for thinking about whether or not the corner of 66th and Portland may be redeveloped. And, and appreciated echoed Councilmember April O'Leary's comments about where the, the benefit of, of a green space that we might like to see on a lawn, on a larger building. And how that's maybe not as, not as fruitful and might be better used buffering the, the development with the park as opposed to just being a green strip in between the sidewalk and the, and development. And my last comment will be with regards to the commercial development. I, every, I, I think is really important that, that of course, I think a Legion is not likely to sell without having a, a space that meets their needs. But that we would support keeping a commercial presence in that, in that corridor. And that's something that will, the Legion served us for generations and having a commercial presence there will continue on for generations. And it's really hard to space back into an area once it leaves. And so I'm glad to hear that even though it's not mixed use, there still will be an opportunity for some commercial square footage. But thank you, everybody.
Go ahead, Council, Commissioner Levin.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I am supportive of this development and there's a lot of elements that I, I really think are going to add value. I think the holding pond that was brought up a little bit ago is, is a great addition. I do want to kind of echo what Simon was saying in that, you know, the, the Legion's been there for a long time. They've been a great neighbor. I would definitely be supportive if they wanted a standalone building or whatever their preference is that we should, we should support that. And again, what we're talking about here is in the abstract, we don't have a developer that's come in and and agreed to, to develop this parcel. You know, and I may be in the minority here, but I don't have an issue with five stories or maybe even a little higher. If that footprint of the building is, is smaller because of what the Legion needs are. You know, I wouldn't want to restrict the floors if it means that we could get a deeper affordability with an additional floor. You know, that's just project economics, simple, you know, cash flow. And so we'd have to, you know, be open to see what a developer brings. But, and where it is on the lot and how it's structured and, and positioned. But I, I wouldn't say let's, let's go ahead and just say five stories is the max. That may handcuff us later down the road. So that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Quam.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I've really learned a lot listening to everybody here and there's a lot to consider. My, my number one thing I wanted to say is, is there any way we could do some sort of 3D modeling? Because, and I'm so glad that you're considering that, Lance and Melissa. I think it's so hard to conceptualize this with just the drawings we've seen. And this is such an important piece of property. And so the design and the aesthetics, I think, is more important here than a lot of the developments that we consider at the Planning Commission. You know, just the, the feeling like of, of swimming next to in, in that proximity of five stories. What would that feel? It's really hard to imagine without seeing some 3D type model. So I hope we can do that if, either now or when there's a developer. And then I would strongly agree with everything Director Markle said, and especially that preserving the, the green space buffer. I think the MR3 setback is appropriate here to fit in with the visioning like Jeff Miller said, and the feel of blending with the, the land behind it. Space, even if space isn't used, it's useful in the feeling and the flow and the design. So if it is five stories, which I wish it would be more like four, I, I'd love the step back thing that one of you mentioned because that helps not make it look like a big block next to a park in a Legion. And then lastly, I, I, I wish the next step of the survey could, I know we are confined by COVID, but you know, some paper surveys are on doors because I, I think getting just the online surveys is a skewed result of people that are online a lot. And so if there's any way to get some paper surveys on doorknobs, and I, I'd help that, I'd be willing to do that. So that could be done and just expand our input a little bit more with the next batch. I know we're short on time. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Quam. I'll jump in briefly and then I'm just going to check in with staff on kind of what we're hearing and making sure that we get any last comments in terms of direction because I know staff do want to get a direction on, are we on the right track? So I will, I will just say, you know, I think five stories max sounds about right. But again, it is kind of hard to visualize everything. And I definitely understand Commissioner Levin's perspective. And, and it is going to just almost be more about what the developer proposes and what it looks like when we have something more concrete and tangible. But I, I do think that I also agree. I'm probably erring where Councilmember Supple is, you know, five max, maybe lower. Again, that's hard to really have a better understanding of if we don't have something specific. I do think for, in my opinion, this is definitely going in the right direction. I was glad to hear the feedback from Attorney Coyle and as well as one of the Legion members on where things are at. And I appreciate everyone's feedback. I, I guess what I'm hearing and seeing is that folks overall are saying, yes, this is the right direction. And we really are looking at more of those nuanced fine points that would maybe come to us with a specific proposal. But overall, I do feel very comfortable with the way it's going. I'm glad to hear that we're all working very well together to make sure that we achieve something that works for the Legion and the community of Richfield. And then the only specific question I have is given kind of the plan that we have today, would it be possible if a developer would propose to work with the Legion to do a freestanding building? Is that an actual possibility that they could do if they're interested in that?
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. Under, the, the way that we're headed right now, the regulations would not permit a standalone Legion. However, when we're thinking about these, we're thinking about them in a broader context, not necessarily just for this. And so the way that we, I think we would deal with that if a, a really spectacular proposal came forward from the Legion that had a standalone building is that we would look at a PUD to incorporate that flexibility, looking at it as a very unique site, something that will not apply across the community and try to adjust our standards there. So I think that's where we would look for flexibility as opposed to trying to write it into this code. I do think that our, our preference for this site would be to incorporate the, the Legion into a mixed-use building.
Thank you so much for that response. So I'll just bring it back to you, Assistant Director Pam. And I know we have a few minutes. So do you feel like, do you just want to summarize kind of what you heard from folks? Make sure that you have everything you need and you heard loud and clear so we can keep moving forward because I know this is a timely issue as well.
Sure. So I think what I heard was that people generally think we are headed in the right direction. That incorporating commercial space in this particular vicinity is an important component of allowing higher density residential. That we, you'd like us to look more, more at the height, the particulars of that height, that in general, we don't want to exceed five stories, which is the limit now, and consider if there are maybe some tweaks or some modeling that we can do to explore that more. The connectivity is very important and it sounds like we're headed the right direction there, making sure that there are added connections for bike and pets through anything that is developed in this area. And oh, and that the stormwater, the, using the stormwater space as additional green space and, and an amenity to the park and a buffer to the park is also important. I think those are the main main highlights that I took away. Um, I'm happy to add some if I missed something.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add is, the only thing I would add is, um, you know, Commissioner Quam's thought about doing more outreach. Um, some of that is, uh, is about time constraints, but we're gonna go, we'll go back and talk about that. Uh, because what I don't wanna have happen is for us all to be, you know, holding hands, going down some flowery path and then a development proposal comes in and the immediate neighborhood freaks out. Uh, they're gonna freak out anyway. I mean, that's just the nature of this. Uh, but we wanna make sure that, um, the immediate neighborhood is well aware of where we're going. Uh, so that when a proposal does come around, uh, it wouldn't blindside them.
I, I do want to add, and I'm not sure if it was clear exactly what kind of outreach we did, but, um, we did send paper postcards to everyone in the area. Um, and I received several phone calls, several, um, emails, several written letters. So there, there while not everyone participated in those online, um, opportunities, there was an opportunity just to talk to me or to talk to Lance, um, and to submit other things in writing. And so um, on this tight timeline, I would envision doing something similar this second round, but I, I am open to other ideas.
Thank you Assistant Director Pam. And so if folks could please, um, email Assistant Director Pam and Director Stark in terms of ideas for outreach, that would be great. And thank you for that clarification. I know Commissioner Levin wanted, um, to just jump in and say something briefly as well. Go ahead Commissioner.
Yeah, uh, just, I just wanted, and I know we're running short of time. So, but, uh, you know, based on the comments that I just heard, I wanna go on record saying that I would not be supportive of any zoning that would limit, uh, the Legion from the option of, of a singular building if that was their desire. Um, they have been, you know, stalwarts of this community. Um, we should respect their wishes and, uh, I don't think we should handcuff them, handcuff them, uh, in their, you know, desire of what to do with their, with their property that they own right now. So, um, just that, that's my personal feelings. Um, and I just wanted to get that on record. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Levin. Um, any other comments before I adjourn our meeting? I will just give a huge thank you to our city staff, to the leaders of the Legion, um, and to our developer, uh, to our consultant, excuse me, um, for working hand in hand on this. I, I'm really happy to see the results and the outcome and I hope that we can continue on this, um, process together. So thank you everyone. I will adjourn our meeting. Have a good night.